This is the October 20th Board, Select Board Meeting for the Town of Concord. It is 6:01 and I'll just ask Wendy to check who's here.
All right, I see Mr. McKennitt, Mr. Bohm, myself and yourself, so that's four of us. We have a quorum.
Yes, and Ms. Hartman is traveling out of the country this evening, so we do not expect her to participate. I'm going to exercise the Chair's prerogative during the public comment period and make a comment for myself. And that, this opening comment is on public discourse, civility and communication. Anonymous expressions such as the placement of disparaging signage along the public way does nothing to support or further productive dialogue. It's counterproductive, it creates confusion, fear and division. In all matters that are before us, the Select Board has been urging civility and constructive engagement. We will continue to work to that end. For example, we are working on putting the hate and bias incident reporting and response systems in place. We have engaged with this issue at every meeting since I've become Chair in June, and we're committed to constructive change. I'm in dialogue with the Chairs of the School Committees to create more opportunities to highlight the strengths as well as engage with the concerns that members of our community have. Personally, I will continue to model civility, respect and engagement in refrain from personal attacks or demonizing those who hold opinions that may differ from my own. I have witnessed this same commitment from other Board members as well, virtually universally. I urge everyone to do the same. Efforts to promote constructive dialogue do take time to put together. In the moment, that may seem insufficient, but these are the tools we have and let's use them to move together ahead. Thank you. With that, we'll open the floor to public comments for items not on the agenda. Comments are up to three minutes. Please approach a microphone so that you can be heard online. If you have a public comment online, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized and promoted and we'll take your comments. So, do I have anyone in the room? Okay, Diane, is your hand still up to be helpful or would you like to make a comment?
It is, I would like to, I hope it's helpful, but I'd like to make a comment. Thank you very much. Thank you for that very thoughtful commentary, Mark. What a lovely way to start the meeting. I'm speaking for myself when I say that one of the aspects of this whole webinar methodology is frustrating for those of us who are unable to make it to the townhouse, particularly when public comment is on. I have a meeting that goes right until about 10 minutes of six, which is when we, when your meeting begins, so the only way I can contribute is by doing it remotely. And I think that I'm not alone in finding it hard to get to the meeting personally by six o'clock in the, in the day, but throughout. And specifically, last, at the last meeting, one of the microphones was not working. And because of the way the webinar system works, one, I raised my hand, I raised my hand again, I raised my hand a third time, and you guys were appropriately continuing your discourse and your dialogue. But finally, and I sent emails, I sent an email to Mary, I sent an email to Wendy, I sent an email to, I think, maybe even, maybe even to you, Mark, I can't quite remember, to Paul, I think. But anyway, when, when there were no responses, because of course you were concentrating on the meeting, I sent one to, to, to
Megan.
To Megan Zamudo. And Megan responded and found, figured out what microphone wasn't working and made it possible for those of us listening to hear. I think this whole webinar forum has real deficits and I hope you will look at it, consider a more appropriate way to assure open discourse and communication with the community, as I believe that really is central to the effectiveness of the Select Board. So I thank you for that consideration. I'd be happy to be part of that discourse and help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. To that end, we, we are looking at ways to make, to create an opportunity for when people are having technical difficulties, some, you know, single place to go for contact on that. And so, we're having a discussion about how to facilitate that because it is a fair point that we're not always aware that, when the technology stops to use us. And you saw me pause at the beginning of the meeting tonight to try to make sure that the technology at least starts out on the right foot. Any further comments?
Thank you, thank you so much. I would just add that you've been so gracious about letting people comment as the meeting has progressed when people have comments or questions. And with this webinar program, it's, that makes it really hard to participate that way. So, thank you. I will now step down and thank you.
Thanks. Did I see another hand?
Yes. Tanya.
Tanya. Okay. All right, we're just waiting to bring her on.
Hello.
Okay.
Hi, hi, yes. I, I wasn't necessarily going, going to comment on this right now, but just joined and hearing that Diane is talking about the webinar format, I want to just, just mention again the letter that I shared with you about my testimony at the State House about the new considerations for making hybrid and remote open meetings possible, or in one case even required, and that, and that there needs to be an improvement to the current emergency regulations so that the public can attend meetings in the same, through the same means that the members of the public body can. Now, you could have an in-person meeting and just limit us to Zoom. And, and I think a corollary of this would in fact be that the webinar format would not work either, because the webinar format does not, also doesn't see members of, doesn't let members of the public to see each other, and it allows members of the public body to communicate among each other via chat. So, so I didn't know about any webinar, webinar format meetings you had recently at all, but, but I agree with Diane and other residents and members that the webinar format is not as effective. It's not just a matter of fixing the technology. And, and I also hope that the new versions of the law will add an amendment to improve the emergency regulations so that the public can attend in person whenever a public body is meeting in person, whether there is also an online option or not.
Thank you. Do I see any other public comments? If not, then we're ready to move to the consent agenda.
Okay, sure. And I just want to note, we have two proclamations in the consent agenda, and I thought I would start by reading those first, if that makes sense. The first is a proclamation, it's recognizing the sister city relationship between the Town of Concord and Town of Nanai. So, whereas the Town of Concord wishes to recognize the Town of Nanai, Japan for the long and valued sister city relationship between our two communities established in 1992, and whereas for more than 28 years, the frequent exchange of students, teachers, government officials and citizens has enriched both our town and deepened our understanding of one another. And whereas the sister city relationship embodies Concord's long tradition of civic engagement and global connection, reflecting our shared values of peace, education and respect for diversity. And whereas we commend the many individuals and organizations in Nanai and Concord who've worked tirelessly over the years to sustain this special connection and strengthen the friendship between our peoples. And we look forward to continuing this spirit of collaboration, learning and goodwill that's made the Concord-Nanai relationship so meaningful and enduring. Therefore, to be, be it declared that we, the Select Board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim its recognition and appreciation of the sister city relationship between Concord, Massachusetts and Nanai, Japan, and extend its gratitude to all those who contribute to fostering international understanding and friendship.
Thank you. And then, this year's Nanai delegation is arriving within the next couple of days?
Next Monday, which I'll have to leave early for, for that one. Okay, and the next proclamation is honoring Dorothy D. Domenico. Whereas Dorothy D. Domenico was a music teacher in the Concord Public School System from 1968 to 1996 as part of her life's devotion to music education. She taught music classes, directed choirs, conducted orchestras, chamber groups and bands, and put on musicals and countless shows and productions which brought rigorous appreciation of music and performances that were for many transformative and brought gladness of heart to audience members, casts and crew. Whereas Dorothy D. Domenico's choral work with the high schoolers, church and senior citizens has won her accolades and awards throughout her career. Her work in Concord saw her recognized with honor at both the state and regional levels. This passionate and dedicated educator taught so much more than music to students who learned valuable life lessons that they carried with them today, proving one person can make a difference. And whereas Dorothy D. Domenico, who's shown without a doubt that a teacher can change your life and seal your destiny. For that reason, students through her long career in Concord have gathered to sing thanks to Mrs. D. for continuing to touch hearts one note at a time and honor her in her 88th year to, by joining Concord once again as their adored Mrs. D. conducts them in song here in Concord. Therefore, be it declared that we, the Select Board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, passes this proclamation in honor of Dorothy D. Domenico, a beloved music teacher who gave so much to the students and families of our community. You know, I'll just also note, there was a great celebration this weekend for Mrs. D. and she also received a state proclamation for her, for her efforts as well, so.
Great.
A hundred students there.
Did they? Yeah, and all my siblings, or several of them actually, yes. Yes, good, it was.
It's wonderful.
All right, so I can move on to the consent calendar. Are there any discussion items on the consent minutes or?
Well, so I had sent through a couple of proposed changes on the minutes. I don't know if people had a chance to review those or, so I guess we should pull them off the consent.
Yeah, to want me to pull that off and we can have a separate discussion?
Unless everybody said I read it and agree, I'd.
I'm, I did read it and agree.
Okay.
I read, I had one comment on one of them that I just wanted to discuss.
Okay.
So maybe we can take it off and sorry to do that.
All right, so that's the October 6th regular meeting then?
Yes, yeah, we'll remove those.
And then, what are the town account warrants? Sorry, did I miss that in the packet or?
You don't. This is generally something that the Chair is responsible for, Mark. I'll have you speak to that then.
So, the account warrants are a list of essentially bills that are paid that come through for signature by the Chair? And they're, they're voluminous and if you'd like, I'd be happy to show some.
No, no, I just didn't know if it was something I was supposed to.
No, they're not usually included in the packet, but it's, it essentially is a laundry list of checks that the town has cut that come to me from, as Chair, from the town accountant.
Got it.
Okay. All right, well, with that, I can make a motion to approve the consent, consent calendar less the October 6 minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, the comment on the minutes, Cameron, it wasn't anything, mostly everything you said here I concur with. I just had a question. There was a comment on number two. It said the value of homes in Concord has seen a lower increase in the rate of inflation over the last 20 years.
Yes.
I didn't think that was true. And I thought that.
Again, I've provided the data, I can provide you with the data.
Yeah, no, 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 I just, it seems counter to other things that I've heard. So I just want to comment on that. And maybe we can follow up, much like you did with the comment with Mary, right?
Yep, yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to provide the data.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay.
With that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as?
Yeah, so just a comment, are we just adding this paragraph, Cameron?
It's replacing.
It's replacing, and which paragraph is it actually replacing?
Sorry, replace, well, I mean, you see the edits.
Well, no, I see on page two, I do, but page eight, it's just a paragraph.
Uh, it's replacing, there was something in there that was, I can go back to the paragraph itself, but that was statements.
Okay, okay, so your intention, yeah.
Providing more specificity to what I said, that's all. I mean, the reality is, because there was, the statements in there said something more general like, I commented on values of homes and.
Yep, I got it, I just.
Providing more specificity, so it's, it's replacing a paragraph that I.
Yep, and it's the paragraph that starts, Mr. McKennitt noted that implementation ends with the tax rate. Okay, I wasn't clear that this was a replacement, that's all.
Yeah, 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 so it's not entirely new, it's just, it's clarification.
Okay, so it's a replacement to that paragraph?
Yep.
Okay.
I do have one question. I don't know if Kristen corrected it. On page 11 of the minutes, there seemed to be an inconsistency. It says, "A motion was duly made by Mr. McKennitt and seconded, but later on it says, 'The motion did not have a second.'"
Yes. I thought, I thought there was some updated, no, but I thought I saw updated language.
I sent an email in the, you were in the meeting, so you might have missed it.
Okay.
It was seconded by Chair Howell, but it did not pass.
But voted. So you clarified that.
Right.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I saw it, yes.
Okay, great.
So I think that, I was assuming that was already incorporated.
Yeah.
That the way that you had pointed it out and the way you suggested, which was to say, I proposed it, Mark seconded it, it was voted down, and then.
Got it.
The second vote was approved.
So, the minutes don't currently reflect that as online. I mean, it didn't, usually these would all have votes, right? This just says.
The packet doesn't reflect it?
No, it just says, "Mr. McKennitt and seconded to approve a 2% merit bonus increase of 47, 50, 80 for Ms. LaFerr for fiscal of 25. The motion did not have a second, therefore was not moved." So if there was a second and we voted it, then that should be reflected in the minutes. That what's here online does not say that, so maybe we should just re.
Well, the last end should be the motion did not pass, or however you change it.
I edited, I edited it to reflect the recording. I listened to the full recording.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
And you distributed that? Yeah.
I believe I did.
So it's just, but the packet is out of date from the most recent edit.
Okay, okay.
Correction.
This happened at, I think, sometimes after.
One o'clock it says, yeah.
Okay, so just so we're clear.
So we're voting the, the one that was distributed.
Distributed to us directly, but, and we'll get that other one posted to the website, of course. Okay.
So we're voting to approve those minutes with two changes. One of these, these changes in second is the one that suggested by Paul.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and that'll be what's posted as the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 6 with the changes discussed during this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Yeah, that brings us to appointments.
We are ready for appointments. Okay, get ready. Here we go. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the following appointments. Sandeep Fashardi of 236 Haywood Mill Road as the School Committee Representative to the Bias and Hate Incident Reporting Work Group for a term to conclude at the completion of the work as outlined in the charge. And for Paul Bohm of 11 Ridgewood Road as the Select Board Representative to the Hate and Bias Incident Reporting Work Group for a term to conclude at the completion of the work as outlined in the charge. Deborah Dorfman of 27 Lang Street to the Bias and Hate Incident Reporting Work Group for a term to conclude at the completion of the work as outlined in the charge. Daniel Hart of 61 West Street to the Bias and Hate Incident Reporting Work Group for a term to conclude at the completion of the work as outlined in the charge. And Julie Herschler of 1381 Main Street as an Associate Member of the Library Committee for a three-year term to expire May 31, 2028. In addition, I want to move to approve the Town Manager Appointment of, corrective appointment of Francis Cummings of 100 Newbury Court as a member of the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2029 for an extended term for the purpose of correcting staggered terms on the committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Okay.
Good. Chair's report. I have a list. I guess the, I'd like to start with the good news. The Concord Middle School Building Committee met last Thursday and the good news is we're done. Effectively, the, the general contractor is CTA, has finished all of the actual construction activities for building the new middle school. That came in on budget. They were essentially waiting for the grass to grow on the fields at this stage of the game before the, before the site is there. And I happened to be driving by there in the evening, which is something that I don't frequently do, and it's, it's quite gorgeous even at night. So that, that project is, was, was really, there'll be some closeout, there always is around the financials and so forth, but the, but, you know, major construction activities have completed and the school is occupied and, and I think that is cause for some actual Also, I'd like to thank the Town Clerk and the Town Moderator for participating in the Effective Governance Workshop Training that took place on Saturday. Saturday was a very busy day in Concord and I appreciate the, the members of various committees that, that came out and participated in that, discussing important things about how, about how we conduct our meetings in Concord. There will be another training coming up in December and that training will, will focus on preparing articles and committee reports and the like for town meeting. Also, always, always useful. We, I wanted to highlight that the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Public Works Commission and ourselves will be meeting in the hearing room on September 28th, that's, not September 28th, October 28th, next Tuesday, to, to go over the outline of the new roads program and how that's going to affect safety and planning. So that's an important and useful meeting, I think, for people to attend who are interested in, in that topic and will get an overview of that. The, the grant announcement was made.
On the, the awards?
No.
Four hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah, the, the.
CJP.
The CJ.
Oh, no, it has not.
Okay, so we're not going to talk about that. I did want to, wanted to have a brief discussion with, with the Board about future agenda items. It occurred to me that in the, in the discussion that we started to have about the FY27 budget, we left a, a piece of the discussion kind of hanging out there about what we wanted to put in place for future years' goals. And this, this came to light with a couple of citizens who were reminding me about some of the, some of the goals that, that come to us, usually in the form of a report from some task force or committee or some plan. You know, we're familiar with the housing production plan and the climate action plan and all of these plans that set out sort of horizon level goals, and yet we don't actually have much process that says, how do we actually turn those into something that's going to be, going to turn up in a capital budget unless that, that committee does that. And particularly as we've been using more task forces instead of standing committees, that we're running a risk of sort of losing track of valid recommendations that we should be, that we should be moving on. And so, I just wanted to mention that as part of my Chair's report because I think that if we're going to engage in such a dialogue, we might want to think about what's the right point in the year to do it. It's somewhat connected, but really is, you know, leapfrogging over the current budget year that we might be planning and, and looking into the future a little bit more and saying, how do we really evaluate all those various goals that, that come to us and say, these are the ones that are going to get some attention in these next cycle and, and not. And it, it was also prompted by Cameron's contribution, the other, the other meeting about program planning and program management is, is a topic that's near and dear to my heart as well, so if, if you're open to that, I'll think about how we might, how we might frame that. It did occur to me that there's kind of a piece of work to do to go spur lunging around all the various plans and reports and things like that and say, what is that set of goals that, that, you know, have been handed to us and how do we move those, you know, what, how do we decide and prioritize which ones are ready to move and capable of moving? So.
I mean, I think it's a good idea that we really should talk about it, and I think all the committees that we liaison with.
Yeah.
We should bring them forward too. It's good for the committees to be talking about them and get some consensus on their priorities and, you know, I, I'm still concerned that we tend to focus on one year at a time. Our goals are really, these are multi-year projects and I'd love it if we had this rolling two and three year focus of the big things that are on the radar, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, so I didn't have a real specific suggestion about how to get at that.
Yeah.
But I wanted to plant the thought and I'm willing to, to schedule some more time to, to talk about how we actually do move that ahead, because it was one of the things that, that we highlighted as a goal coming forward this year.
Yeah, just one thing to think about, you know, we have the individual plans, but there are a lot of cross-cutting issues.
Right.
Yeah.
So we might think about cross-cutting issues rather than individual plans and see.
Right.
Because I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of our committees and boards are hitting pieces of a larger issue.
Right.
Yeah, I think you ultimately have to sort of bucket it in, in some larger themes, right? So, you know, you have all the individual committees, but then you probably have, you know, something around financial goals, something around, you know, unpicking topics, right? But, you know, commercial development, housing development.
Exactly.
You know, some, some big sort of picture kind of themes and then, you know, you want to try to state what some of those key objectives are in each of those areas and then take it from there to say, how does that translate back down into like specific, you know, short, medium, long-term to sort of get.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially when we're, when we're thinking about something as fundamental as land use and what we want to do with, with the various properties to optimize, that, you know, presumably we'll come, we'll, we'll bottom out on that at some point, have, have some decisions made, and then there are some programs that can run right on top of that once that framework is sort of identified. So I feel like we're in a position where it's a good idea to be teeing that up to be ready when, for example, the Land Use Working Group comes back to us and says, this is, this is how we think municipal property should be, should be deployed going into the future. So if that's a, if that's a topic of interest, I'll, I'll be looking to, for ways to schedule that. I also wanted to make sure that it, that, that I, you know, said out loud that if there is a, an agenda topic that you're looking for, please, please do make me aware of it and we'll, we'll move ahead with, with that. There, there may be a request as well as we, as we try to, you know, accelerate the, the MCI work for some kind of a special meeting, so be on the lookout for a potential, you know, availability request for that in the next week or so, for that dialogue. And I think that's, let me see if I got my list. Those are the things that were on my list. Town Managers' Report.
Okay, thank you and good evening. And picking up, Mark, on what you mentioned about the, the training that was conducted over the weekend by the Town Clerk and the Town Moderator. The Town Clerk and staff have actually put together an Effective Governance Planner for the fiscal year and they are intending on providing quarterly training. So in addition to the one this Saturday and the one that you mentioned in December, in January, they will be hosting a training on minutes and agendas and talking about templates for agendas, specifically the minimum requirements for agendas, best practices, the open meeting law requirements versus what our town practices are that may be over and above the minimum requirements, and then planning options for making minutes happen. In April, the topic is appointments and reappointments, and the items that they're looking to address are planning for, for term ending, knowing your charge and APP 10, the Appointments Administrative Policy and Procedure, pathways for Select Board, Town Moderator, Town Manager and Independent Appointments, and what's required of appointees and reappointees. And then in July, they're looking to do an open meeting law review, and that was something that we did, I think, about a year ago, and that was very well attended. I'm sorry.
And Saturday's session was recorded for the presentation portion for anybody, so you can look for that on MinuteMan Media.
So I know you did mention or refer to the busy weekend. We did have a few thousand protesters attend the No Kings Rally. This weekend, police and fire reported no issues other than traffic at Monument Square. after the event. Fall cleanup is underway at our cemeteries in preparation for the annual flag retirement ceremony and our Veterans Day observance. Our water main flushing program is underway. It started last week and continues this week, today through the 24th, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. The department is busy flushing 130 miles of water mains. Flushing is routinely conducted during the spring and fall, when the demand for water tends to be at its lowest, and cold weather and potential freezing is not an issue. Flushing enhances water quality. It allows sediment buildup in the water mains, especially at dead ends and in low-flow areas, to work its way out of the system. As a result, the act of flushing water mains can cause a discoloration of water. Discolored water is safe for activities such as bathing and dishwashing, but it is not recommended to ingest. Every neighborhood gets flushed roughly every other year. Additional flushing is conducted if sediment historically has built up in certain neighborhoods. And for more information, please visit the town's website, where you will also find the water main flushing schedule and a map of the areas that will be participating in this year's program. There is a Ride Out Park Subcommittee Forum tomorrow evening to discuss pickleball versus tennis courts at Ride Out. The Council on Aging is also meeting tomorrow evening. The Council on Aging, as I believe I've mentioned before, is extending its Thursday hours to 7:00 PM as a pilot program. There is some participation. It's slow, so I would encourage anybody who's interested in checking out evening activities at the COA to consider coming to one of the Thursday events. The Department of Planning and Land Management is rebranding itself as the Department of Community Development. This has been underway for some time. We're ready to launch. And this is to more accurately reflect the work that is being done within the department. The department has also completed a review of all of its fees and presented that to me, and I have accepted their revised fee schedule, which will go into effect January 1st, 2026. And it is estimated that the new fee schedule will generate between $200,000 and $250,000 in revenue. The fees were adjusted based on what area communities, what we're seeing in area communities. We are definitely still in the middle of the pack, not, not leading, but we, we were lagging. I know, Mark, you also mentioned the, the Transportation, Roadway and Traffic Safety Forum next Tuesday, October 28th, which will be from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. Also that day, the Transportation Advisory Committee will be meeting at 9:30 AM. And there are two transportation workshops related to the plan that is underway, and those will be on November 19th, one at 7:30 AM and one at 6:00 PM. The library wanted me to mention that its Festival of Authors began on Saturday, and events go, continue over the next two weeks. The requests for proposals for the Climate Action Plan update are due on Friday. Deputy Town Manager attended a Recreation Commission meeting to talk about cell service in West Concord, particularly focusing on a potential effort at Ride Out. And will be making a presentation to the Select Board next week at your meeting. The tourism pop-up that we had scheduled over at the North Bridge to account for the, the federal government shutdown has come to an end, but we have temporary restrooms that will remain for the month to help out over there. And, let's see, two additional items I wanted to mention. We have eight podcasts in, in our Civic Concord Podcast Series, eight episodes and another one being released this week. So we would encourage residents who are interested in town events to sign up or subscribe to Civic, the Civic Concord Podcast. And then finally, the most recent issue of the Concord Currents Newsletter was released this afternoon. And that is it for my list. Thank you.
Are we still in a, in a drought emergency in a way that would compromise the water main flushing ability? And just, and I was walking next to the river yesterday, and it is really low.
Well, I would say that we would not have undertaken that.
Yeah.
Activity if, if that was an issue.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for the town manager?
No.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, sidewalk decals. Mimi, are you ready?
Right on time.
Are we?
Yes.
They say about a broken clock.
Hello, I am the Economic Vitality Manager for the Town of Concord, and I am the Staff Liaison for the West Concord Cultural District Committee. Folks might remember earlier this spring, the Select Board approved the installation of sidewalk decals. It's about 130 or so individual decals reproducing artworks from local people in the community. For a couple of different reasons, they were deployed and then had to be removed, and then we put in another set with a, a, new decals that are more robust. And they're looking really great, holding up well, and the fall has been pretty dry overall, so the decals, originally we were planning on taking them up around now, since they're still looking good. The committee is proposing to leave them there until after the holiday stroll in West Concord, which is the second Saturday in December. And that is with the caveat that if it, if it starts peeling, if they get slippery, if there's snow in the forecast, we'll take them up right away. We discovered on how exceptionally easy it is to take them up. It's like less than an hour to take them all up. So we're requesting from the Select Board permission to leave them there until after the holiday stroll, with the date somewhat flexible, definitely no later than December 24th, but I, most likely shortly after the holiday stroll, or immediately if there's a reason to have them.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only question is if it's like, snows or something and you plow, does it like chew up the, you gotta get them out of there before it snows and gets plowed or something?
So they're on the sidewalk? And so if there's snow in the forecast, the committee has already said they've got a team ready to go, we'll just go and take them up. And it's happened really quickly.
Just a comment, they're, they're very attractive in West Concord. They, they really popped. I saw people actually staring at them like an art gallery, you know? That they hadn't noticed those before, so really effective.
Yeah, no, I've, I've sent people over to West Concord. It's like, if you think Concord's great, go over to West Concord. And we're going to bring our NNI friends over there also for the wall, so that'll be great.
Just a question, can, not, not this iteration, but next time we do it, if we do it, can they be made bigger? Can they, is that a feasibility, big expense?
So they can be made bigger?
Yeah.
It is kind of a, an incremental expense of each decal, so we'd have to have a smaller set of them.
Yeah.
So the committee sort of, this was our first year doing it.
Yeah.
So they might amend it in future iterations.
It's been wonderful. Are we ready for motion?
Yeah, I believe we are.
Okay, all right. I move to approve the extension of the installation term of public arts sidewalk decals on town owned property in West Concord until after the holiday stroll event, which will occur on December 13th, 2025, but no later than December 24th, 2025.
Second?
Any further discussion, any questions?
No.
It's a great idea. I hope they'll consider doing it again.
We have to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, Mimi.
Okay. That brings us to the shade tree, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No.
No, Municipal Empowerment Act, yeah.
Municipal Empowerment Act, oh yeah. How could I skip that? Man, thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm Shannon McCandrick. I'm the Management Specialist in the Town Manager's Office. So we wanted to give you an overview of the FY26 Municipal Empowerment Act. There was an FY25 version that is very similar to this version. There are only a couple differences that I will get into, but the main things that are outlined in your memo that I'll just run through quickly are continuing the provision for hybrid and remote meetings, which started in COVID. There are some procurement modernizations that would allow for some administrative tasks in the procurement process to maybe be avoided in some situations. There is a local option for motor vehicle excise taxes and local meals and lodgings taxes. And for the local meals, that would be 1% and lodging taxes up to 7% respectively. And then there are also, the last couple of things that I'll go through are emergency financial resilience, and that authorizes municipalities to pay off emergency-related deficits over three years, and then enhanced local authority and administrative efficiency streamlines the expenditure of Chapter 90 funds and PEG access receipts without any additional appropriate appropriation votes. And then the changes from FY25 to 26. In the FY25 version, there was an option for permanent outdoor authority for outdoor dining and alcohol-to-go service. That was already approved through legislation last year. And then there's a couple of new sections, which is related to bus procurement. And then the last is a public health provision, declassifying fentanyl test strips to support harm reduction efforts. So also in your packet, we included draft written testimony, which would be for the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government for their hearing on October 28th.
Thank you.
So Shannon, I have one question. I might get, getting the legislation confused around the open meeting law. Does, is this, did the language allow for remote town meeting participation?
I didn't think in this version.
It's not that particular one? Okay, I just wanted to just check. I didn't read that one.
It's just for standard board and committee meetings?
Yeah, okay.
So I read through all this and it sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I.
Yeah, no, we support it in the past, so I, it's good.
Yeah, no, I mean, if.
Appreciate the background.
There isn't anything here that I see that's, you know, controversial. It's something that allows towns the flexibility to do these things if we so chose, right? And I didn't see anything there that was particularly controversial.
Shannon, just a question. So the, the examples of the dollar amounts on top of page two, those are just examples of incremental.
Letter of support.
Letter of support.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right.
So we're not bound to the, we could do other, other changes other than those specified here?
Yeah, well, you.
Yeah, it's just saying sort of each, I think it's like each .25 is worth this, each 1% is worth this. You can choose up to 7% or up to whatever.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
No, I'm fully in support. Great.
Yeah, I think the, and for those people that don't speak chapter, speak municipalities or municipal government, Chapter 90 is transportation funds. So that's the funds that come into the, into the roads program in addition to our locally developed funds, which is always a good thing to be able to spend them efficiently. So, and I, I do think that there, there is a conversation, again, again, with items that we may want to consider is, the, the, to the, to the comments that we've received about how we might put policy in place to support things like how remote meetings are used. So I think there is a recognition that various, various boards and committees are operating slightly differently. The, the Effective Governance Workshops are an opportunity for, for committees to kind of understand what the standards are, but I think they're, you know, we may have enough experience with this now that we may want to say things like.
You should record your meetings.
Town of Concord should be recorded, for example.
Right.
I, I don't think we have a policy that specifically states that, and, you know, that would be an area that, that if the board wanted to get into, especially since it does look like, I'm assuming this is going, you know, this passes eventually. I guess the, last year's Municipal Empowerment Act didn't actually pass.
No, it did not.
Which is why it's here again.
So that's the other, that's the other thing is that, but I, we, we have seen, and I find it hard to imagine that the authorization to do remote and electronic meetings is going to go away even if this doesn't happen.
Correct, right.
Right.
So we might want to delve into that subject at some point if the board is interested.
I think we should for consistency purposes because people have raised concerns to me, and I've just spoken to the chair about those when that happened, and I, I think we've made some changes, but if there's other inconsistencies, we should discuss it potentially.
Yeah.
So I, I know we have heard some feedback from our business community about the local option taxes, and I know this board knows, but just for the, for the public, a local option means that even, even if we have the authority to impose these additional taxes, they have to go to town meeting, and they would have to be approved by town meeting in order to be implemented in the Town of Concord.
Important clarification.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I mean, is like this is an avenue. It is a way to look at raising revenue in, in a different way from property tax. Just something that we would, should it pass, we would then have to take up.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Did anybody have any specific changes they wanted to see with the letter? I, I found the letter very helpful, and we'd be prepared to sign it on behalf of the board if we decide to move ahead.
No, I thought it was signed.
Okay. Do we need a vote?
No, this does not require a vote. Well, one does not, we can vote if you like.
As long as it's a sense of the board, I'm, I'm happy to sign the letter.
I think it's fine.
Okay, great. We'll make that happen. Now we're ready for the.
Tree.
For the tree removal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. That was a well-done summary. Okay. Come on up.
So this isn't a separate hearing? We don't have to close?
No.
No, this is, this is a, so we, we've been here before. This is a direct appeal to the board for a removal request. This was not, was, was this denied by the tree warden once? All right, okay, so this is an appeal. Okay. So did, did everyone get a chance to take a look at this?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Ms. Solomon.
Yes, I thought there was going to be something on the screen, but you've all seen.
Well, we should put it up so people.
Yeah, we will. Yeah. But if you want to talk to the slides, that's fine, or, or you can tell us the story in your own words.
I could tell a story, certainly.
Ooh, good.
It all started when the house burnt down in 36, caught a flame. Trying to reconstruct the home with the tree is difficult, and you have to go around and the, actually, the, ah, yes. Ah, yes, that is said tree. Looks great from some angles. On the, on the side that will have the house, all the branches have been taken up towards the top. Ah, yes, there it is. It's been fun to live with. It's going to be difficult to reconstruct. I know the tree is quite nice at the top, but in the meantime, we've, we've had, you know, discussions about who, who belongs to the tree and who does the tree belong to? And it turns out that it is one-third of a foot on town property, .35 inches on town property.
So the rest of it is not?
The rest of it is not.
Private property.
Again, it's a beautiful tree, especially from this angle, but it would be nice to have sunshine in the yard. It would be easier to reconstruct the home if the tree were removed. And I certainly have a, a lot of other trees in the yard as well. a lot of other trees in the yard as well. I have three beautiful Japanese maples. I have a copper beech started in the front yard near this one. And two cedar trees in the backyard. I guess the rhododendrons are going to have to go too. Nobody's objecting to that. And and that's, that's it. And it's also leaning towards the railroad tracks. And another another fear is that one great wind will come along and it will cut out electricity on Cottage Lane, communications on Cottage Lane, and it will stop the train. But that's a, that's a sort of a what-if situation. But it would be much easier to construct the home if the tree were not there. And we were, you know, before we, we've had to have two instrument surveys done at the request of the town. And that's how we found out it's one-third of a foot onto town property. It's a beautiful tree. But it would be certainly, you know, convenient and safer to take the tree down.
So if it was a third of a foot the other way, it was all on private property. Could you just take it down?
We have a tree preservation bylaw.
Right.
It would still be a public trade
I'm asking if that really matters, like whether it's on the the third of a foot is
The third of a foot, yes, you could, I could, we could take it down ourselves and plant six trees elsewhere in town.
But I think that, and I might ask Eric Shaw, who's online, to weigh in.
Where is Eric?
Um, he's on Zoom.
No, he's obviously not here, no.
So that just the
There it is.
It would, it would fall under the public shade tree ordinance if it was within, is it 15 feet of the right of way? Is that, I'm I'm asking.
He's made it so.
Eric, you want to unmute?
Good evening, everyone. So to answer your question, it's it's not really a set measurement as far as determining, you know, the distance from the center of the road and that sort of thing. You know, the right of way is basically just the the county layout. So essentially this tree fell, as the resident said, within about half a foot of, you know, being on town town land. So we made several requests to their contractor, surveyor, to, you know, sort of prove to us that it was not a town tree and and all their surveys showed up with mapping that indicated it was, you know, partially on town tree, or excuse me, on town property. Therefore, you know, as the law reads, it is considered a town tree. And so, yeah, basically, about a half a foot of it does come into town property.
So the obligation on, if this are private tree, the tree preservation bylaw, you'd have to plant equivalent diameters? Multiple trees? Well, not
The sum total?
Six trees in tot- in total. When you say six trees.
Yes, I think so. Or that's
Six trees, yeah. So this is 24 inches of six trees of four inches. But it wouldn't be on your property. It'd be anywhere in town?
Oh, it could be anywhere in town, I guess. I'm not sure. It's all new and
It's not just a fine.
There certainly isn't room on my property
Right.
For six trees. I have six trees.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Eric, can you clarify that under the tree preservation bylaw, what, if this were private, maybe this is a planning board issue?
Or NRC.
What would be the requirement of the homeowner if this were private tree?
So I'm I'm not well-versed in the tree preservation bylaw that falls under planning in the Building Department, I believe. But, yeah, there are, there are specific requirements. Again, I I don't know them off the top of my head because I don't, I don't deal with that department or that aspect of the tree preservation law.
And that would fall under the the planning board when they approve their construction, right?
It is. It's, but I don't know if it's, is it the planning board, the NRC now? If it's new construction, it's under the planning board.
For new construction.
The tree preservation bylaw.
It's not brand new, it's reconstruction.
Right, no, 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 yeah, I understand.
But you'd have to get approval for the for the the construction. So somebody would have to give you a permit.
We
Right, they'll be
Able to demolish it, but every step is, well, let's say, just interesting.
My understanding, the new construction permit would have a requirement on the on the tree preservation bylaw as part of that permit.
Is there, is there a reconstruction plan already for the house?
Oh, yes. I have a picture, if that helps.
Okay. Pass it around.
Trying to do just a nice little old colonial.
And then can you speak a little bit more about the the issues with the the complaints from your developer around not being able to work around that tree?
Well, it's it's possible because we have a backyard we can go through, of course.
Right, right.
But it of course would be easier
Right.
Being able to access the front as well.
All right, so it's 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 not that you can't do it, it's just easier to do
Yes.
For the developers. Okay.
And speaking, it would be so nice to have sunshine in this house.
Yeah. So, you know, the, and I, as I looked at the tree, some of the lower branches were trimmed off. You could do more of that as well. You could take more of those branches down as well and get that sunlight in there if you had to as well. That's an option, right?
Well, that has been tried by both the neighbor and ourselves and it's not very successful.
So is this, Eric, is this tree fully mature at this stage?
No, no. I I have a hundred-foot Norway spruce in my backyard. It's much bigger than this one, but
So it it will get bigger?
It'll get bigger, or it can get bigger.
And it is really about nine feet from the foundation of the old house. I mean, it was really close.
Right.
Yeah. Megan?
I can speak to the tree preservation bylaw.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
I'm also not an expert in this, but what I have found is that a project is subject to the tree preservation bylaw if all of the following statements are true. If the lot is located in a residential zoning district, which is double A, A, B, or C, if the project involves any of the following: demolishing a structure with a footprint of 250 square feet or greater, constructing a building or structure on a vacant lot, constructing a structure or an addition that increases the gross gross floor area by 50% or more. And the third is that there's at least one protected tree on the lot. So there's more information there. But if all of those are true, then the tree preservation bylaw would apply.
And what's the definition of a protected tree under that?
I'll tell you that. So it has to do with the diameter, I'll tell you that. Any tree with a diameter at breast height of six inches or greater within the tree yard is considered to be a protected tree unless it is an invasive species. So there's this kind of a formula.
And does it speak to the compliance with, I mean, if you, they wanted to take the tree down, isn't there a fine? Or a fee that can be paid? Because I don't remember it saying that you had to plant six trees. I was just trying to figure out if that was correct. Or if it's just a a fee that's paid and I'm sorry, Megan, I mean, put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I I think there is something about that.
Yeah, I think it's
So if this tree were a third of a foot close to your house, you wouldn't be sitting there.
Right, right. Right.
Probably was when it was smaller.
It was.
I know, that's the unfortunate thing, right? But, you know, it is a, it's a healthy tree as well, so that's the other challenge, yeah.
Yes, there's no way around that.
Right, right.
It's also
We were denied insurance from our last company
Yeah.
because of the tree and because of the wisteria. I thought I looked like the Cotswold, but the insurance company didn't go along with that.
And that's just because
Change insurance companies because of the tree.
I mean, my observation is the wisteria and the tree are merging. I thought I saw something climbing up there.
Absolutely, yes. It came in the office one year.
Yeah, okay. Do we want to take some comments on this?
That might be helpful.
Okay. I see Tanya has her hand raised. Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak to this before?
Yeah, no one.
Can Tanya unmute? Go ahead.
Hello. Hi, thank you. Yeah, just, I was on the tree preservation bylaw committee, subcommittee of the planning board when 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 that law was first drafted. So the compensation for that is if the tree has to come down, the compensation has to do with planting tree, a tree or trees that add up to half the size with of the tree that is being taken down. So it could be six trees of two, two-inch diameter. But they need to be planted either on the property or on a budding property with a budding property's permission. It can't be just anywhere in town, as far as I know, because I double-checked it. Or they can pay a fee to the town, and I believe that may be set by the select board. Again, I'm not sure about the current amount or anything. So, so that's, that's what I know about the tree preservation bylaw. However, since the tree is also a public-shaped tree, I I will, and since construction is possible without moving it and I, as even as I sympathize with the cause of the demolition and the fire and everything, I I ask you to to require the tree to stand. But if you do, if you do give permission that it be taken down as a public-shaped tree and 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 the applicant continues, then then yes, the tree preservation bylaw would apply. And it's the Building Department that I think implements the bylaw.
Yeah.
Not not the Natural Resources Commission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Any other comments? This question from the board.
Well, you know, I have to, I feel very sympathetic because I know the fire that you had was really traumatic. But I feel like this is a healthy tree, that the town shouldn't have to take down necessarily. So I'm not necessarily in support of removing the tree.
I feel the opposite. I think it's, you know, a tree that looks like it's kind of a nuisance to your property, nuisance to the house and to trying to rebuild something on on land that you own. And I think that if there's an option to either, you know, pay a fee or, you know, replant smaller trees, new trees will continue to grow.
To address planting smaller trees, Cottage Lane is a very close neighborhood. And there's no place for me to put any six trees on anybody else's property. So that's, that would be a problem. Someplace else in town.
I I would assume that could be discussed with the town if that was the path. Because you, I agree, it's very wooded around that property.
If if the tree is taken down, could the wood be donated for some particular purpose such as building benches around town or something? I mean, it's it's a big tree. It would build a lot of benches, not a fence. But, yeah. I don't, I don't know where to go from here.
So I'm with Cameron on this. I think you're sitting here, I mean, it's it's a lovely tree. If we were, if we were a third of a foot closer, you'd be under a different law and you have obligations. I think, you know, shade trees are important. There are a lot of them in town. This one is just barely on, barely under our jurisdiction. Now, that's the technicality, that's why it's here. But I think the the right of the homeowner to kind of reconstruct the house, for me, falls pretty heavily. Want to give you the ability to to build a house after, you know, a fire, which was unfortunate, and be able to get insurance in doing that, so.
I I actually agree with Cameron and and Paul on this one. There's this is a 5,303-square-foot lot. That's very close in the in the center of town and while it just seems to me that the tree to some extent is out of scale and the practical concerns about trying to, trying to rebuild the structure after a fire that close to a tree like this is is really challenging to me. So, you know, I I believe that that we are called upon to make judgments and in this case, it seems to me that it retaining this particular tree in this location, given that it probably only gets more problematic from here as it as it gets larger, seems to me that the costs outweigh the the benefits in this particular case. So I I'd be inclined to to grant the permission to have the tree removed.
Would you like to take a motion?
Do we want to, do I hear a motion?
Yep.
Just taking, so we are here, this is an appeal. We are here to grant a permit for removal. What what is the action?
You're moving to approve the removal.
Approve the removal.
Yeah.
Of a 24-foot Norway spruce at 38 Cottage Lane. If you would like to make that motion.
Does anybody need a Christmas tree this year?
We could call New York, New York.
Yeah, maybe we could.
So, yes, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to to move to approve the removal of the 24-foot Norway spruce at 36 Cottage Lane.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna say opposed.
I hear one.
I'm just one. Not that I'm sympathetic, I am sympathetic because it's really four inches.
It's a very challenging situation.
You have some excellent pine cones.
I have many of them. I have many of them, believe me.
And there are a lot of things going on in Cottage Lane these days.
Yes, but the neighbors were all going to sign a a piece of paper if things didn't go well to say, yes, please do take the tree down.
Yeah, you have the support of your neighbors in this and that's, that's important. These things are very subjective and I recognize that in these really tight parts of town, there there are some trees that are literally growing, you know, beyond what the the capacity of the area is.
If I could ask a clarification on something, does that mean the town will take it down?
I think it does, doesn't it? That's my understanding.
I think Eric is trying to respond.
Eric?
Yes, where it is a town tree, it'll be the responsibility of the town to remove it and remove the stump and foot the cost of all of that.
I have a nice estimate from tree masters. I'm I'm very happy to pass that along. Thank you, and I understand that it's a beautiful tree.
Yeah.
But and thank you all.
Well, we're truly sorry. It can't be easy to have your house burn.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe it'll wall up before it snows.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And I believe that is our
Reports.
That is our open meeting business for, oh, so liaison reports. Does anybody have anything in their liaison report that they want to highlight or comment on?
Yeah, I have a few things.
Okay.
Although slightly beyond the liaison report, I just want to let the public know that Atlantic has just, the magazine just published a really, really interesting whole issue on the unfinished revolution. And there's an article in Concord, very interesting article, which is, describes a confluence of history and culture and geography and geology and why the revolution started in Concord. Very, so I don't work for Atlantic, but and slightly beyond the liaison. Really liaison reports, the 2229 Main Street Oversight Committee, which is, which monitors the the work at the the Superfund site. Couple of things, Superfund funding is not an issue. Interestingly, Superfund makes money for the government because private parties pay it, so that's, Superfund's not going to stop. There was a hiatus, there was some furlough of the EPA staff, but that hasn't stopped the the work at the site. I had a discussion with the committee about, I think I had a discussion with the committee about, thinking about initiating a risk communication effort. If you remember, the advisory committee advised the select board to do three things. On the legal track, to talk about possibly acquiring the site, planning for the future of the site, and also talking to the public about what the site's gonna look like. So the, the oversight committee's gonna take that up as a standing agenda item to kind of develop that over the next months and years, and probably come back to us and report on that. Transportation Advisory Committee, I think, Carrie, you, you mentioned a lot of it. Let me just restate that one of the focus of the TAC is the, and of course, Alisa Sandevall in community development, is the work of STANTEC. STANTEC is developing the comprehensive townwide transportation mobility study, and while the town is the major customer for that, the TAC is very much interested in how that affects the, the planning and their, their charge. And the TAC is actually looking at their charge, and they've had several discussions about revising that, modifying that, and, and that also relates to the, the forum on the 28th of October that you mentioned. Just again, because they've gone quickly, the STANTEC's work on the transportation advisory strategy, they're gonna be discussing that with the public at two public forums on November 19th, 7:30 in the morning, and 6:00 PM in the evening. Stay tuned for that. I'm sitting in for Mary on a couple of things here. I've been sitting on the CPC meetings. Nothing to report other than the application, or applicants are presenting, they're two-thirds of the way through that. Next meeting is on October 28th, and that'll start early at 6:00 PM because there's gonna be an hour devoted to the CPA, CPC discussing the amenities building separately.
There's more requests this year.
There are more, there are 19 requests, $5 million plus, and, and there's maybe $3 million plus. So there's lots of decisions to be made for the CPC. So stay tuned on that. You did mention Recreation Commission. I, I just want to shout out for, for Megan's detailed discussion at the Recreation Commission. What brought that on is the, the discussion, the potential discussion of putting a cell tower at Rideout.
Monopole.
Monopole, right.
A monopole.
Right.
Sorry, a monopole.
Were you listening to her?
Yes. This power sounds real, it's a different.
Sorry, sorry.
Different terminology.
My, my bad. The public should look up monopoles, it looks like a flagpole with a little whisker sticking out of it.
Oh, no, all internal.
Anyway, I know you'll be here next week, the select board meeting, but anybody should tune into the, to the recording, it was a really excellent discussion, description, not only of the potential at Rideout, but elsewhere in West Concord and, and the whole Concord issue of cell towers, and, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly of that. So that was really quite helpful.
If anybody wants to know what a monopole looks like, there's one at Baker Avenue that you can see from Route 2 as you're driving by.
Okay.
It's a big white pole.
Right, there's a couple of them down.
The Land Use Working Group, you mentioned, the subgroups are making good progress. I'd say, according to the co-chairs, we're about two-thirds of the way through Phase One. Phase One is each of the three groups, municipal consolidation, public safety, and public works, getting the information, the data, and the options, the long list of options, the short list of options. And the Phase Two of that was probably begin early next year, is the groups coming together to prioritize and then determining what land that may be left over for other uses, housing, commercial development. So that, that work's coming along quite well. Last thing, the, the new Bias and Hate Incident Reporting Group, it's Bias and Hate, not Hate and Bias. The first meeting will be on November 6th of that. The committee was just appointed formally tonight, so stay tuned for that. We'll be working on a plan and getting that going on November 6th.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just quickly on the school committee in the last meeting, good walkthrough with the school committee on their sort of zero-based budget process that they're following. So good to kind of go through, a little bit of a walkthrough of that. They have gone through some exercise to estimate incremental costs, or at least set up a model for being able to estimate incremental costs, to the extent that there's additional students as we look at things like, you know, new affordable housing developments and MCI and MBTA zoning and all that stuff. Now, there's a lot of variables that go into that, but, you know, I think they're prepared to look at, you know, different scenarios and what that can mean in terms of, you know, cost of the schools and stuff like that, so. Yeah, and then meeting Wednesday at the middle school, and continuing to encourage, I think, supporting, you know, mark your comments at the beginning of the meeting, and making sure that we have that sort of civility. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was just, I guess, maybe not quite a liaison report, but the Concord Business Partnership, right? And the opportunity that we had for, to hear a presentation from DCAM, which I thought was a great presentation. I thought they were very well-prepared, I thought they did a great job sort of outlining some of the, you know, sort of state thinking, right, around the MCI development and some of the, you know, future opportunities and scenarios for consideration. So certainly it was great to sort of hear that dialogue and hear questions from the, the Concord Business Partnership around sort of that, that site and some of the redevelopment opportunities.
Great. I, I left my notes at home, but off the top of my head, I did cover the Recreation Commission, which Paul already spoke to. The only other question I had for Megan was, one of the comments during the recreation presentation was, there is an actual cell tower at the state police, and did we follow up with them? I just thought I'd ask.
Sure, there is a radio tower across from the Rotary on MassDOT state property, and it is pretty tall, I think it's about 200 feet. And there was an application last year to the Historic Commission because of the Section 106, I believe it's called, kind of a standard process to request approval through that process. But it was not permission, you know, to cite it there, it was, it was, it was a different process. But yes, we have, we have certainly looked into that. We're gonna have our radio frequency consultant in for presentation next week. But, you know, we don't own that property, number one. Number two, it is not exactly in the area that we would be seeking to improve coverage based on our radio frequency analysis and from our feedback from the community about where the coverage gaps are. So it is not an area that is kind of the top of our list. It's also, it's an older tower, and I think if we were to request, you know, to partner with the MassDOT for infrastructure, there would likely be needing to be upgrades. But I think at the, at the high level, it's really not within the ring of area that would, that we'd be looking to.
I mean, as a practical matter, there are two towers on the Nurse-Nak Hill that you can see from the base of that tower, and they have a capacity for five carriers, of which I believe there's only two or three carriers on them now. So if somebody was really interested in being in that area, they could go on an existing tower in our existing overlay district tomorrow. And in fact, there used to be, I believe, one, at least one carrier up there. So that area actually has pretty good coverage, so.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I didn't mean to get us derailed on that topic. It was a good discussion at the Recreation Commission, so as Paul said, people should listen to it, I think. You know, some of the concern was not, it was, actually Megan did a good job talking about a monopole. It wasn't so much the monopole that was of concern, it was sort of additional space that may be required that would take away from use of Rideout. You know, like extra buildings and stuff like that. So it was interesting conversation. The other sort of comments, the finance committee did actually, the schools did present, same thing that Cameron was just talking about, they put their five-year projections together, did some sensitivity analysis about, you know, if you had 25 more kids, would you add a teacher, that type of thing, that kind of sensitivity analysis. So they put their projections together. CPS around the 3% over the next five years, CCHS was more around the 2% increase over the next five years, and it varies, but I can follow up in more detail with that. The other update that I just wanted to share was with the Hanscom Area Select Board, the HATS committee. There were two presentations of interest. One was, you may recall that the, the local towns supported a air quality study around Hanscom, and the report, while it's not finished yet, there was a presentation on the results, and there were some, some findings for towns particularly that were downwind of the airport. Concord did have two sites in that study that were measured. One was the Thro site, and the other site in Concord, I don't know exactly the specifics, but, so there'll be more information coming out about that. And Paul, I can share that result with you if you're interested. And I've shared that with the Public Health Director as well, and we're all sort of waiting for the final report. The other presentation that happened at HATS was, there's an alternative fuel proposal called SAFE that was discussed, and it's a question of whether there's actually a viable alternative to jet air fuel. And the, the discussion was really that it, it's not really viable from a, from a CO2 emissions perspective. It takes more energy to produce this alternative fuel than the actual fuel that it would replace. So it takes basically all the energy from Massachusetts to replace the fuel that Massachusetts would use for jet fuel. So interesting conversations, and I'm sure there'll be more to follow on that. So I'll leave with that, and I think you, you heard about the RP that's due later this week for the Climate Action Plan, so.
The, the.
It's called SAFE.
SAF fuels.
Yes.
Their biofuels, and the, the argument for using those is that the entire life cycle of production would be less carbon emissions than the life cycle of petroleum. It's not the use of the, the fuel itself.
It's the production.
The whole life cycle.
Right.
And it's a very complicated calculus.
Very.
A lot published on it.
But the amount of energy just to produce this, splitting of CO2, it's, that, that's the challenge, is the energy taken to produce it outweighs.
It starts with farming and cultivation.
All of it, so.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
All right. That's it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, if that's it for liaison reports, then I believe we're going to head into an executive session now.
All right.
To consider purchase, exchange, lease of real property. Since I, as the chair, declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and we will not be returning to open session tonight. So we'll thank everyone for coming, and do I hear such a motion?
Yes, move to enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2186, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and not return to open session. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. McKennett?
Aye.
Mr. Bohm?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And that'll be the end of the Zoom call.